...park at all because this is now being mitigated by virtue of our actual rules, which have been, you know, talked about for nine years. And so, I don't know, is there a special place that this can go based on its nature? That it wouldn't set a precedent to undo future other people wanting to do things?
I'll address Councilman's question and maybe after each of the council members have had a chance to speak.
Well, the other thing I forgot to add was, this conversation has been going on since 2007 or '08. And I mean, I know I was a part of, I've been a part of this conversation. So, this is not new news. And so, for the reaction of, you know, to be what it is, it's like, there should have been participation along the way. So, there's a side of me that's like, you know, I'm kind of torn about this whole issue.
Go ahead.
So, in my tradition, there's an old expression, business is business and Moses is Moses. And we were talking about a unorganized, spontaneous, charming, historical continuation event that has a flavor. So, and I'm gathering, I can't speak for you guys, but I'm gathering that there's a very big tug and pull with our hearts right here. I would have a concern of setting precedents for other groups that don't have the same charm. But part of the charm of this and part of the difficulty that they would have had communicating since we've started this discussion in a formal way is that they're not organized. They don't have a formal organization. Maybe it's time they should, but then maybe it would lose its charm. I don't know. Part of the charm about this is it's so spontaneous. And we keep saying that we want to have this friendly little small-town feature to our personality as a community. And I think it's something that we want to preserve any way we can. One concern I would have that was brought up to me in a conversation, and respectfully, is I wouldn't want this parking area to become a tailgate area. Okay? I wouldn't want this to be the area where somebody comes in, brings their pickup truck, sets up their barbecue, and it becomes a football tailgate. On the other hand, if it's a area, I can be empathetic if it's an area that somebody wants to, needs, has a need or wants or a desire to get closer to the gazebo for logistic reasons, so that they can put their blanket out on the grass closer to the gazebo and do that in a physically capable way, then I'm empathetic to that. I don't have an answer. We're opening the discussion. I'm just throwing out. I would like, as far as the quality of the grass goes, right now, I think the grass is a little vulnerable. But that's a temporary thing because it's still new. It's still got the spaces between the pieces of sod. And as that fills in and that grass gets more robust, I think this is a grass that can be durable and handle as long as we don't go on it during the monsoon season, in the middle of the monsoon. So, this is, I hope this is an area that we can find a good resolution to. Maybe it could be a nickel ride or some type of ferry service. Or maybe there's a way that, because this physically, you do have those bollards there that could be easily removed for the event to accommodate them. Is there any liability for us? There is a ditch there. If somebody falls and stumbles and so forth, who takes that liability? That's part of the business side of it. But on the emotional side of it, I have a strong heart to try to come to some kind of acceptable accommodation to maintain the flavor of this spontaneous group. And if that means parking on the grass and we have to take a little risk, fine. But I don't want to expose this to other groups that would want to use this as a precedent. And I'm not sure how we can balance that.
I love the music in the park. Spent lots of nights at Steve Blackwell's house. But his house had order, his library had order. And not that, when I talk to you, Michael, we all met, I think we all met with him. That's what he indicated. I met with him and Howard and Rick was there, too. There's really no give and take in this situation because nobody wants to take any responsibility. Up here, I have to protect the assets of the city. I have to consider liability and I have to consider the residents that live adjacent to that park. I just don't see how we can do this two nights a week in perpetuity or year-round. We haven't even made it through an event season or a rainy season, and we haven't even finished the landscaping or the rest of the park. So, not that I'm saying no forever, but for right now, I just don't see how it's workable. There is a swale right there. I mean, we walked it. We looked at what configurations could be. But the fact that there is no organization is what worries me. We have a whole event permit. We hear event requests all the time. We take security deposits. We make them get event insurance. These are things that cost money. Not that you have to, you know, have money to do business with the city. I mean, but there has to be some responsibility on the people that want to use the park for whatever purpose it may be. I would hope that this can continue. I mean, we just got done. This is a thing that really upsets me personally. I take it personal, sitting up here for eight years. We just fixed all of the ADA issues that we had at this park except for restrooms, which we do have an ADA accessible restroom right now, although it's temporary. We just fixed all of our ADA situation and we're getting knocked. And I just don't, I don't think it's fair. And I just, at this time, I can't agree to do it. Yes?
I agree with a lot of what everybody's saying. However, I have, independent of my conversation with Michael, and I did also have a conversation with him, I've walked the park several times since that day. And it is very clear to me, we have insufficient parking at that part of the park. It's very clear to me that we have totally inadequate parking down there. And I would like to suggest, as one of the things that we consider doing, is that we go back and revisit the parking that ran along the front of the pavilion and the gazebo area as we had it before. I think we should look at taking a stab at that as an alternative for part of the solution to the problem. I'm not crazy about setting a precedent with one group versus another, but I also understand the dilemma that they're in. And I've been to the Thursday night sessions once in a while. And I understand and I sympathize with those who are somewhat disabled, that they can't walk the distance. And so, I mean, one of the things I do think we need to do is revisit the entire parking scenario down there because it's not adequate, in my opinion. So, I'm kind of like where Gary is. I'm kind of between a rock and a hard place. My heart says, we should help these folks and we should do something to accommodate them. And I agree with you as far as the liability side of it. So, it's a very precarious situation to be in. And I mean, if it were up to me, I'd say, sure, go ahead, park on the grass. It's not going to hurt me. But it's not totally my decision to make. So, those are my thoughts.
Anybody else? Gary?
We're not going to come to this conclusion today. I'm not sure that there will be one. But I hope that we can collectively, as we go about our ways, because unfortunately, we're not allowed to talk to each other during the two-week intervals, that we can talk with other people and try to come up with a way to be accommodating to this venue. Because it is such a strong historic piece of the fabric. And it would be kind of like giving up a limb. I mean, but it's not, it's just not a cut-and-dried solution here. And unfortunately, there is a parking lot over by City Hall, if that could be utilized. I don't, you know, I'm just, I'm just...
That's even further away. And we've got Carmelo's opening shortly.
No, no, I understand. And I saw, you and I have the exact same pain in the face. I'm just saying, maybe there could be some type of, if the folks at the Guitar Army could band together similar, in a informal way, as the Friends of the Playground did, to figure out some way to maybe organize a little bit, to get some shuttling type of funding of some sort. But the city can't take that, they can't take that shuttling funding on our own. I don't see that happening. But there's, I just hope there's a way we can, we can figure out how to accommodate this, short-term and long-term. You know, there may be a short-term solution that we could live with for a while while we execute a plan for a longer-term solution. I just think that we have to try to get out of the box and figure out how to figure this out.
I think that that's what...
Go ahead.
We're all getting to the same conclusion here. It's really, as much as we would want to, and I think that's where I am, it's really thinking about different solutions and ways to achieve it. And it raises the question as, you know, how would we accommodate more parking and those kind of things? More formalizing of this Guitar Army, a nonprofit, gee, you know, Guitar Army, something that becomes a, something that's really kind of a status symbol. You know, so there are just, there are lots of options. And I think that this conversation can go somewhere.
Well, go ahead, Gary.
I'm sorry. A long-term solution could be, don't everybody hit me on this, is we do have vacant lands that people have expressed that they want to develop. There was one piece of vacant land that a friend of mine sitting in the back, and I had proposed putting a band shell on, in one way of development. The long-term solution may be through gardening and landscaping and development of some other properties that the city owns, of having a different park area with the parking and everything all available specifically for these types of events. That could be a long-term solution. It's not a short-term solution. But, you know, we've got a big piece of, hi Gary, Gary's here, too. We've got a big piece of property that we've had a lot of discussions about, sitting over there on, just off of Henry Street. And, you know, maybe the dogs would enjoy the music, too. So, I just want to throw that out because I can't discuss this over the next two weeks.
If I may.
Have your say and then we're going to wrap up.
Yeah. During the year when it was under reconstruction, we tried to move it. You know what the problem is, is that there's no method of communicating because there isn't a, an organization. People know about this because of word of mouth and across the years. And it's known regionally. They know to come to Gilchrist Park. It's taken on its own branding. I mean, when you try to move it, it doesn't work. We already, we already know that. We tried to move it during the year and it fell apart. It was coming completely apart. The notion, how to recognize the special nature of the music in the park, you know, I heard the adverse use and that you can't adversely possess or adversely use against government. That's not a concept that flies. That doesn't have any wings. The, what we've done, however, from my perspective, really and truly, is we've fixed a problem that wasn't broken. You ask how, what are we to do because we've made, I was in the first charrettes about the changing of what was going to happen at the park. I used to live downtown Punagorda on Marion Avenue, and I walked to the park. And I still mostly park at my office and walk to the park. I can do that. The, but there isn't adequate parking there. We did take away what was useful, adequate parking, and we stretched it all the way down Reta. And for most occasions, almost all the time, that's plenty of parking. There's no reason to park in the grass. Think of this as overflow parking when you've got something that's popular. We do this in every kind of event. Every kind of business has some kind, churches have overflow parking that goes over onto the grass. The diagram that I have up here, at where those arrows are, there's bollards that can be unlocked. Those are intended for access points. And so, the notion that we're bringing vehicles in where vehicles aren't allowed, there's a sign that says authorized vehicles only. We authorize vehicles to go in there. It just has to be authorized. And so, there's access points, the drainage swales are very evident, and people would stay out of them. There's plenty of area that needs additional landscaping and should be further landscaped to make it a beautiful park. This is just a park in progress. But the parking on the grass, I played Little League baseball down here at Gilchrist Park. I played Pop Warner football. There was, there were softball fields there. People have always, since there's been a park, since there's been cars, there's been parking on this grass in this park. And so, what we've done is we've, in the charrette, let me tell you, the big picture of what all that was going to be, that was what people concentrated on. Let me tell you, it was not clear, in the time that I participated in all that, that we were making a no parking on the grass and that that was going to be forever. And you know what? If we made that plan, we also made a plan that we were going to have a bathroom there. We still have a plan for that to happen. But you know what? You know, when the implementation of the plan starts running into problems, there's inadequate parking and it's causing, not only you're not accommodating, but it's causing problems with the putting the park back together for musicians that have this tradition, is that, I mean, there's easy, it's not hard to park there. It's easy to park there and it's not dangerous and it doesn't tear up the grass. And you know what? The people and their spirit and the use of the park is more important than grass. Surely, everybody give me that one. I mean, we play football on grass and it gets torn up. We fix it again. We do all kinds of things on grass that gets torn up. To me, this, what I hear you say in putting it off, and at least let us have this attempt temporarily. If it's a problem, then we'll readdress it and stop it. But it's hurting right now. We are, we are a specter of the Guitar Army and the music in the park that used to be. Seriously, if you don't know that, you haven't been. We are a specter of it. It used to be vibrant and it's just clinging on right now. Help us. Help us.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah.
What if there was in ordnance for those hours on those nights, only for this particular piece of the park, only? Like, I don't know.
Let me, all right. There's two things at work here. The first is that it appears that the Guitar Army is a victim of its own success. I mean, I'm sure that when it first started, it was a small group of people that would come very informally. Word got out that this was happening and more and more people would show up, more and more musicians would show up. And what started as maybe an informal gathering of a few people, has evolved to what I've heard from that podium, is a gathering of hundreds, hundreds of people and upwards of 1,000 people for this, has been described as a festival, an event, a special event. And so, to suggest that it's just the same informal type gathering that existed years ago, I think is a falsehood. Also, since the time that it first started, times have changed. We no longer live in the innocent age where we can ignore potential liabilities that municipalities face when you have gathering of people on public facilities. We are already pregnant with liability from the standpoint that, you know, I've heard that we have facilitated over the years, this group by keeping the bathrooms open, by turning off the sprinklers. So, we have, at least in some extent, encouraged the gathering at the park on two separate occasions without the kinds of infrastructure, both physical and in manpower, that we would otherwise require of gatherings of that nature. I see no reason why we could not be requiring this organization of people, and I use that word, organization with a small o, to create themselves in some fashion as an organization with a capital O, and apply for the permits that other organizations are required to apply for, to utilize this park area. And that could include, on a temporary, regulated basis, some form of regulated vehicular access to this area. And as long as we treat it with a permitted approval, with the required safeguards, depending upon the size, there needs to be some sort of police and other first responder presence, maybe the requirement for some sort of insurance, whatever, whatever we would typically do for gatherings of the appropriate size, we require for this gathering. And we can remove the bollards for that permitted event. Otherwise, what happens is that if we allow one group of people to regularly utilize the park and have access that we facilitate with parking, but without having that be permitted or regulated in any fashion, there is an increasingly more difficult opportunity for us to tell the next organization that they can't have the same opportunities. And if that next organization happens to be an organization whose message we don't particularly care for as much as we care for the Guitar Army, then we're finding ourselves in a major legal litigation situation. So, I understand the resistance to organize. But this is not the '50s and '60s anymore. This is a time when there's lots of litigation and lots of people standing in line to sue the city for things as simple as this. So, my recommendation is, they find a way to organize themselves to the extent that they can apply for the appropriate permit. And that, and our permit system is based on the number of expected participants. There's two levels. If they qualify for the lower level, fine. If they don't, then they have to apply for the permit that has all of the safeguards based on the number of intended participants. I don't think it's that difficult.
Any other comment?
I don't think it's realistic. But, I mean, I understand the liability situation. I just wish there was a way that we could accommodate them. They have been with us for 30 years. They bring a lot of people into our community on a weekly basis. Those people go to our restaurants, they shop in our shops, and they use our park for recreational Thursday nights and Tuesday nights now. And it's just, it seems like we're not accommodating people realistically. And I, so it's a very, very difficult decision to have to make. I just wish it were easier. Agreed.
Gary?
Directly or indirectly, this city has subsidized other venues of arts. For example, the Visual Arts Center, they get a very favorable rental on a city building. But they are a formalized organization that has an umbrella.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the question would be, the possibility, the question I would pose is, is there such an organization, such as a, and I'm just, just because they just first came to my mind, would there be some kind of community organization that has a, has an umbrella that could take this project in under their umbrella? Okay? This is not visual arts, it's audio art. You know, so that's the only reason I was picking on the visual art, or some community, 501(c) or something like that. And then a way to get enough funds so that, you know, generate some minimal funds just to be able to get the permits and to fulfill the letter of law that our attorney has outlined for us, without creating a significant burden, and to minimize the lack of spontaneity. I don't know, I'm just throwing that out. But maybe we could approach some other organizations. Or it could be even the YMCA over it, or somebody like that that could, would be willing to take them in under their umbrella to be able to fulfill the steps that we just had outlined to us. I don't know.
I'm sure there would be.
Yeah, because I've seen this concept used, like myself with organizations playing a fiscal agent for unorganized groups of people so they can be able to, you know, access funds and things like that. This model does work.
When does Nickel Ride plan to get?
May.
Well, maybe they could talk to them temporarily.
What does that help us get from the road to the gazebo? Excuse me, I don't get that.
Okay. All right. Well, any other comments? We're going to move on.
Okay.
Just to clarify, I'm not saying they can't park on the grass. I'm saying they should, if you're, if you feel like it's appropriate for them to park on the grass, either just for the musicians, or the musicians and the patrons, that's fine. But let's do it by way of a permit so that we have to, we don't have to allow everyone who wants to park on the grass, park on the grass.
Do we have to charge for that permit? Do we have to charge for that permit?
Yes, we do.
Can we charge $1? No, we have established rates. We have for nonprofits and profits. We have established rates. I mean, if you want to waive those rates, that's up to you. But we have established rates. And they're used for a purpose. Because in case something happens, we have at least enough funds on hand to repair what needs to get repaired. That's why we have our rates.
I understand. I'm just looking for...
Are you asking for, I've heard the whole conversation. Are you asking for staff to go back amongst ourselves and see if we can come up with some, some options that, try and figure out some more parking without adding more to the grass?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
We can do that. We can do that.
Okay. All right. So, moving on. Recommendation from city officers, city manager.
Next Wednesday, March 28th, 6:00 PM, Council Chambers is our budget community conversation. We hope people will come and have input into what they would like to see or not see in next year's budget.
That's it?
Welcome all.
City attorney.
Wow, it's already the end of March. Nothing further. Thank you.
City clerk.
Yes, under boards and committees, starting with vacancies, we have an expiry term as an alternate on the building board and an expiry term as an alternate on the code enforcement board. Under nominations, we have two three-year terms. These are for the non-HPAB member seats on the donation review committee. We have three applicants for nomination.
Nominate all.
Thank you. That's all I have.
That's it? Policy and legislation, I think we heard enough about that this morning from our lobbyist, Jerry Paul. So, stay tuned for the CRC and what gets put on the ballot, and then we'll go from there. Councilmember comments, we'll start with JaHa.
Just one quick thing. I have been asked to bring forward, there are several citizens that would like us to put together town hall meetings. And I would like to suggest that we get one scheduled before the snowbirds all leave. There are a lot of people that would like to hear from all of us at a town hall meeting.
Any support?
We have council meetings.
I know that. But they want to have an opportunity to talk for more than three minutes and ask questions and have a question and answer kind of period.
Are we allowed to do that as a collective body?
Yeah, we've had town hall meetings.
If it works out.
Advertise.
Yeah.
Yeah, advertise it.
I'm okay with having a town hall meeting. I mean, giving people an opportunity to...
I mean, we take tons of input by email and phone calls and, I mean, we're all available all the time.
They want town hall meetings. I'm bringing it forward because I was asked to do that. And I have several citizens that asked me.
I'm not opposed to that.
I mean, I don't know. I think council meetings are town hall meetings. That's just me personally.
I would agree.
I agree.
Nancy?
Yeah, I don't agree. There's a big difference between a town hall meeting and, I mean, I realize at the end of the meeting, people can get up and bring up whatever they want. There's just a difference in the formality of a town hall meeting versus a, an actual council meeting. So...
Do you have any other councilmember comments?
I have no other councilmember comments. I think I've brought enough today.
Gary? Citizens' comments, any topic. Take this podium, you have three minutes. Anybody?
Peace River Revival.
Michael Hayman's, Peace River Revival. I hope all of y'all come out to that. We're bringing national acts. These guys are bringing national acts in here, big names. And the only, the only thing that I question their judgment is they asked Michael's Hibiscus Band to be in it. And so, I'm the only local band in it. We're on at 3:00. Please come at April 7th. I'll be working on a song for you, probably.
Anybody else? Citizens' comments.
Pat Niles, Gateway Point, District 2. With your idea, I promise I won't sing with my voice. But the question I have today is going to be coming up, and it's going to be an issue that's going to be significant. And you've dealt with it just last, your last meeting. And that has to do with the height of the buildings in downtown. And I've done reading and I've listened to many people, many especially in District 2. And up to this point, I haven't heard one person support the idea of going to 84 feet. And some feel quite strongly about their view on what happens to Punagorda downtown. I tried to do a little research on it, and I appreciate the research that has been done. And I did go, you have a terrific way, for those who don't know, at the city council website, to get the agenda and the meetings in PDF. website, to get the agenda and the meetings in PDF form. There's just tons of information that are out there, and I appreciate the effort you do. One of the things, when I saw on the presentation that you, that you had at the last meeting, is it showed if you went up to the seven stories, that it would be looking this way, it would be so many this way, and then cut in, so that you get a bigger view looking down this way. Well, I was trying to look at it, well, what would the view be if you looked at it from across the street? And the closest thing I could come up was, is that Plaza del Sol, which I think it used to be the US Steel Building. And when you look at, for the height on that, that's 85 feet. And that's that big building that, for condominiums, that you just go over when you're going on over to the Isle Jacques Club, and you're going on over that way to PGI. Crossing that bridge, it's just on the right-hand side, it's that big white building. If you count the floors, it says six, if you count them, but the top has the swimming pool on it, so I guess that gets the seven, seven stories. And I'm just, I tried to picture that, and move that in downtown Punta Gorda, just for that spot. And I do kind of have a concern on that height of a building down there in that particular location. The other question that, of some research I was doing, was looking at from the owner's viewpoint, who purchased that particular lot group, that lot? And it was purchased back in 2003, and they paid $3,346,900, so about 3.4 million. And if you go on the MSL of what they want to sell it for now, it's C. S. and Charlie, 7245, 985, if you want to look up what the MLS number is. And they're posting that for $9,400,000, so 9.4. So that's a gain of $6 million. They're a heck of a lot better than I did with my two lots in Deep Creek, that I'm still trying to sell. So I'm just asking, and it was spent on the market 119 days, unless they sold it this weekend. And I guess I'm done. Thank you.
Anybody else? Make your way.
I'm so sorry, I know everyone wants to go. Nick Nemec again, real quick. So I do not have the luxury of doing events for free. I do have to fill out my permits, I do have to get insurance. However, I don't have the tradition, I don't have the heritage of the Guitar Army. I also do it for profit, and I also do it for charity. Guitar Army, as far as I understand, it's not for profit, there's no money being exchanged, there's nothing in that regard. The procedures are real, and you're right, you know, we've, we've been through litigation because of our festivals, so it does happen. And the one suggestion that I have while I'm sitting here, or thought, was, number one, because it's in Gilchrist Park, it's a limited park anyway, in fest, in events, you know, just because of the regulation of what's required on the application. So, with that being said, is there a way, again, to provide them a permit that would give them that day, or days of the week, that would be a continual permit, that would be just, you know, that's what it is, so they apply for the year, at a minimal charge, or whatever charge it is, they got to come up with that money at some point, okay, for whatever that charge is. And also, since it's being held at Gilchrist Park, which is a city park, is there a way to possibly get them on as an additional insurer with the city, if they were able to come up with the funds to be able to go on as an additional insuring? I know it doesn't cost a lot to add somebody on as additional insuring, it also helps spread out the liability. On a standpoint of favoritism, I get that part, and I see that the city doesn't want to take on maybe favoritism in that direction, but it's just a thought in terms of if we do need them to have insurance, and we do need them to have formal application status, maybe those are two thoughts. That's all I got, that's all.
Thanks. Last call.
I just wanted to thank the council for considering all the comments and input. What I didn't hear today from this gentleman was any compromise in terms of, you know, really laying out, what is the issue here? Is it the fact that people are unable to physically get to listen to the, to the music, you know, to get from the parking facility to the location? Is that the issue? If so, then there can be some sort of transport or something to help people get from one place to the other? Or is it the fact that they just want to drive their cars unique, uniquely, where no one else really gets to do that? We don't do that at Lashley, we don't let people just drive all over the park, and we're pushing back on letting the pickleballers do that too. So, I think if you break it down into its components, you know, what really is the issue? If it's, is it parking? Is it to have the, the visitors be able to get from their car to where the musicians are? Then that's, that's a problem to solve. Is it moving the equipment, you know, break, break it down into its different component parts and see what, what's necessary? But, I, you know, I, I, there, there is a liability aspect to people being able to both use the park for walking, for sitting, for whatever, and having cars maneuver around and turning around and backing up and such. So if, if people are sitting, listening to music, and they've got their chairs and blankets out, and people are, need to leave early, and they're pulling their cars out, and people are sitting there, so there is some liability to the city too. So, you know, I'd love to see the tradition continue, I'm a musician myself, I think it's a great thing, I thought it was really cool, you know, seeing it, but, but I just think we, you know, we need to be judicious and cautious with this, this whole thing. We did just finish the park, I think that there was citizen input on the final design of the park as it stands now. And also, I think you might need to have a city employee actually at the location to remove the bollards and put them back at 9 o'clock at night, or 10 o'clock at night, and that's a cost. Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, we are adjourned.